I'm going to mute myself here. Come on.
I get tired of reading the newspapers with one eyeshot. Good thing there's a bunch to read.
Yeah, it doesn't take very long anymore. I held it up the other day and I thought I could see the light through all the pages.
This thing is going to have a parathyroid or something that you can read in the newspaper.
All right, it is nine AM. I am going to call this meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, January 26, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and since we have a visitor today from Watertown Development Corporation, Chris Shilken, if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a notation, if you have a cellphone, if you would silence that and we are streaming live on YouTube. And we will still take call for public comment and those two phone numbers are 882-624-8 and 882-6297. Those are for items that are not on the agenda and just for advisement purposes only. Item number three, conflict of interest items, are there any on the agenda for the rest of the commission?
No.
No.
All right, item number four, action to approve the January 26, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the January 19, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries. Monthly reports, we will start with emergency management. Jamie is here, so if you'd come up, please. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Jamie. Good morning again, been a very active month. I'll just start out with some of a lot of the things EM offices have been entailed to since, what was it, right before Christmas? I think our last meeting. We continue to do our annual updating of rosters and nature and such as far as search and rescue members, county fire departments, what have you, normal channels of annual updating, working with the state for our requirements. I've attended a couple of different ICS virtual trainings over the last month and it looks like quite a few more. The state is really ramped up training efforts virtually, kind of dialing in there. I did respond to a grass fire in Dual County as a mutual aid because it entailed the South Shore Fire Department over there on that large one back on December 22, I believe it was, which burned up quite a few acres, about a four mile stretch. Also responded to a house fire near the Wallace area between Wallace and Florence, just providing mutual aid. Family was very well taken care of by their own. And I continue to attend more virtual meetings, which include our bi-weekly county partners meeting with our towns and assisted living folks and we cover related topics to COVID, South Dakota vaccine, Department of Health COVID meetings, along with regional meetings in our Region Two area. Last week, we started our bi-weekly snow water equivalent check will be happening now through March for the Corps of Engineers and how we do that is take that measurement and give them the bi-weekly report. Looking good so far. Monitoring the weather, we've had a couple of wind and blizzard events there. Average snowfall for the area according to the Weather Service site looks to be about 6.4 inches in that six to seven inch range in our area northeast. What's really different about it this year is our average temps have been averaging that 10 to 20 degrees above average of normality and the frost lines are very shallow this year. I think looking at the history, I thought they put out the shallows it's been in several years. So continue to monitor with that. I was contacted by the South Dakota EM Public Assistance Office on a related issue with a resident on Horseshoe Lake Road, which entails Richland Township and looking to remedy some mitigation strategies, some water inundated roads, just to get to that residence. And one big thing that come out of that was with EMS response and things like that. So I worked locally with the Richland Township and trying to come to an agreement of using a, plowing a minimum maintenance road for in case there was an emergent response out there. But I've also guided them to not only the Public Assistance Office site where they can attach or go after the possibility of some 404 mitigation strategies to apply for and hopefully get a permanent resolution to what they're up against there. Moving on with the Cotton County Search and Rescue Team, we've had a very active month for responses with search and rescue, including the Day County response for that missing woman in Day County near Bristol. We've been up there a total of five times. We use quite a bit of, not only Day County's lead agency, which we have mutual aid agreements with. So we respond for them using technology with 360 sonar on ice and using our ROV, which is a remote operated vehicle underneath and we, no luck so far. What was brought about that was a cell ping of her last known area and we still just kind of go with the guidance of what Day County is giving us as response wise. We also responded to that Hamlin County response on Lake Ponsette on January 9th and that day produced four separate calls for that search and rescue team. Ice conditions are poor due to the fact of all our, what I mentioned in average temps being 10 degrees, 20 degrees higher. So I just practice everybody to have a plan and remain safe on that related issue. I'll move on to some COVID topics. Currently, our COVID numbers as of yesterday look like we had 124 active cases and only three hospitalized locally. We look at Department of Health calls that I attend and listen to virtually, of course. The seven day trend shows our positive cases, not only as our county, but as the state are declining very well. That's a good thing for now. Mitigation strategies are going to remain diligent. Department of Health is also updating strategies for long-term and assisted living facilities as far as giving them maybe additional guidance on when they can go back to visitation side of the world. The state currently is still only receiving that 11,000 doses weekly and that is divided amongst all those healthcare providers that have been channeled with providing that COVID vaccine on those two. Still remains very limited on the allocation side of the world. I think they announced yesterday, maybe even on Unified Task meeting, they're only seeing that three to 400 doses coming in locally. So patience will be a very big key role in this as it moves forward through Phase 1D. They're continuing additional Phase 1D. That 65 and older still remains at 265,000 people strong. And what I did is broke that down into 18% of our population according to that Census Bureau of 2019 is about 5,200 people, you know, now you also have to take into consideration they're adding all the underlying health condition issues as they channel along, but currently it's 80 and older, which started last week. And preliminary now, next week, we are going to host along our local pod response, preliminary meeting to start establishing our needs and the modifications to perform a pod if we get brought into play. But we're still seeking guidance on the state plan and contractual funding for that. So right now, we're going to move forward looking at as it would be a regional pod with the entails all four of our surrounding counties here. So more to come on that, we'll see how that plays out Monday. That's when we're going to start that process. I still await that answers. I've worked with three different channels of Department of Health and still don't have a contract in hand as far as funding on the county side. Whether I'm going to have to reach out even further, upper channels, we'll see what remains or if I have to come to this board and look at what other kind of guidance and money and what would be covered. With the new administration and the president's office, we'll see if they're going to change things up. I think there's a lot of different fluid moving parts of this thing that will come into play.
Any questions?
Just, so for the, you said that we're getting, locally, we're getting in the hundreds of doses a day? Is that our doses or vials?
Per week.
Oh, per week, okay.
11,000 doses in the state is kind of the average, I think just over 11,000.
Per week.
Per week.
Okay.
And then that's channeled out to Prairie Lakes.
And if that's going to be the steady flow, I guess that's kind of factoring into what the state's thinking about. I'm guessing whether or not to do pods or not.
Correct.
So right now locally, the places where it's administered is pretty much the hospital, Prairie Lakes.
Prairie Lakes, Brown Clinic.
Okay.
The Sanford Clinics, those channels are reaching that 80 and older.
Right, okay.
Parts right now and then some of those underlying health, there's the dialysis, the cancer.
Right, right.
There is some discussion at the federal level that they might be opening up more vaccines to states and nobody knows really for sure exactly what that means, but we could anticipate seeing more vaccines coming into the state. Right now, we're getting about 11,100 vaccines per week. And then those are, like Jamie said, distributed amongst the communities, so, which is only 300 to 400, like you said. So it's not a lot when you're talking about 5,000 people. So it's going to take some time to get all those vaccines pushed out.
And I think part of, you know, that kind of just steady flow, does it, you know, they're trying to wait, does it make sense? It's just going to be, if you're not going to get like all the vaccines at once, do you need a pod? It's kind of the question they're probably trying to figure out.
So those are the things we need to dial in.
Right.
You know, the bottom line on that is the allocation side. If they could give us some hard numbers on when we're going to receive those, then we're going to have to react.
So we're still one of the top states, I mean, within that we're, in this, this as far as the percentage of vaccine that's administered, we're number four after, you know, so that's, we're one of the top states. And then I think we're even higher as a percentage of the population that's been vaccinated, so.
And the big thing that came out of the Task Force press conference yesterday was that people need to be patient, be vigilant. Just, you know, go to the Department of Health website, find out who your local healthcare unit is or Sanford, Prairie Lakes, or whoever, they will be in contact with you. If you have gone to a clinic in Watertown and you have doctored with any of the local doctors, you are on file and you will be notified when it's your time. But just patient is what they're, what they're encouraging.
And I believe both clinics locally reached out to those folks email wise, those who do have the email provided at us and offered them, so. Yeah, looking briefly this morning, quickly at those numbers, vaccinations in Cottington County, as of yesterday's statistics show 1,981 administered vaccines in our town thus far, since it started in late December there, so.
Is that first dose or second dose?
First dose, I believe, second dose is only about 400 and some strong right now. It's starting to come into play, so.
Yeah, that pod situation, you know, if we don't get larger amount of allocations, then does that look like several days, you know, of trying to hold something like that?
You know, and looking at some, just on local media channel, I believe it was down in Cook County, starting this week, I think they've established four separate dates. So how their communication channel worked out with that people in 1D that they're doing right now, I'm not really aware of how they, how they did it, but they're planning in their local armory, four separate dates that kind of goes through March. So, you know, you have those 21 and 28 day wait between the two current vaccines that are offered. So they're scheduling accordingly on that side in McCook. And I believe that was a Sanford response in that area.
It takes some organization.
It does. And a few modifications of what those logistics look like and that's where I fall under on that sector of the instant command team would be the logistics side, so. There's a lot to be determined, hopefully the Department of Health steps up a little bit and keeps moving forward. I think locally, it's a doable deal, you know, we can all come together at that time, just get it done. Anything else, questions?
Patience is the word.
Patience, big key.
Just, Madam Chair, if I may, just would like to extend a big thank you to our search and rescue volunteers. They've been working hard, as you said, a lot of callouts, a lot of time away from family and friends over the holidays to go out on these searches and we're hoping for the best in the deal up in Day County, but you guys have been up there and appreciate your efforts.
You know, a little highlight on that, there's also a pure salvage dive team that's been up there and followed our tracks and he's getting the same answers, nothing. So we continue to go with Day County and state's guidance on what they want looked and searched and just kind of follow their lead as it goes. Hopefully something comes about it.
Absolutely.
For some closure.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. All right, so we will move on then to the Sheriff's Report. Brad, good morning, Brad. I heard your report on the radio that you gave some of that.
Got some info there. One depth in here today, so.
That's pretty good news.
Yep. There. These guys want to grab. One of them packets, pass them all. All right, we'll start with the balance sheet up front there, bank balance end of, probably on the wrong mic here. Bank balance, end of December 2020, $15,705.32. And if you jump down, $4 in copy fees collected, $9,661.82 in sheriff's fees collected and $450 in warrant fees that were collected for a grand total of $10,115.82. Then they say there was a bond that wasn't dispersed until January, must have come in at the end of the month there. So you can see the total was 5,589.50. Without that bond, we're back to 5,8950. Jump over to the next page there. The monthly report for the month of December. Month of December 2020, cases and calls, sheriff's office responded to 567 cases and calls there. Did 12 accident reports, there were 64 warrants that were served, 242 civil papers that were served and 2,270 transport miles that were done. Jump down a little bit there, you'll see the graph, you know, talk about some jail numbers here. Our average daily population in December was 39.68. Our high ADP was 50 and our low average daily population was 33. 24/7 numbers, you'll see the graph up in the middle there. We had 22 people on the scram bracelet. On the twice weekly PVTs, we had 52 people. Twice weekly UAs, we had 46 people and five people on the sweat patch. For a grand total, 125 people on the 24/7 program. And then we had 188 bookings for the month of December. If you scroll on down, we'll show there was $8,180 for out of county contracts that was collected. Work release is still zero because we don't have work release up and going at this time. 24/7 fees, $8,189.50. And the shram beans that were collected that went to the courts were $4,287.
The reason work release is not provided, is this COVID?
Yeah, due to COVID, we still haven't opened up our work release because that would be inmates would be coming and going daily to try and relieve, make sure we don't get COVID in the jail. We've been fortunate so far, knock on wood if you're superstitious.
What, what would you say is kind of the average work release pre-COVID? Just, you know, average, it wasn't that big, but it was, I mean, it was a portion, it was a percentage.
It would range 10 to 20. It would, it would fluctuate up and down a little bit.
So a little over 10% to 20% is.
That number would pen up and down a little bit. When we go through the yearly report, I think that number's in there, how much we decreased in our.
So what's happening with those individuals now that they're not able to do that?
The courts have been working with them a little bit. There you go, Troy, pass that one down. They've been working with them either on house arrest or giving them different sentencing to make, to make that happen. So you just talked with the judges recently, now they're set in the past, um, and they were really hoping we could get work release up and going and say, at this time, that's something, maybe this spring we will look at again.
Are you wondering what our revenue was for work release? Is that what we're talking about or?
No, I was just trying to get a, I was just asking about a rough idea of the percentage of the ADP.
How many?
Pre-COVID, yeah.
What kind of revenue?
We can, we can, no, that's something we can work on in the data thing.
In 2019, we collected $108,000 in work release.
Say that again.
In 2019, we collected $108,000 in work release.
But that's something, maybe Matt and I can sit down and see if we can, maybe there's. Yeah, that was a spare, that was a spare.
Okay.
All right, so we'll jump to some of the year-end numbers unless there's any more questions on the monthly report there. So a very quick security screening here, there were 72,083 people that went through our security screening metal detector that Dave runs down there. There was 8,875 bags that were screened and X-rayed, 911 bladed weapons that were turned away, 50 cans of mace and 34 other potential weapons. Average people through the metal detector per day is 356 people per day, so, but if you, Dave does a good job down there. And we'll jump in to the two-page report here, that Excel sheet, that is our sheriff's office numbers. You can see in 2020 there, sheriff's office responded to 473 traffic complaints, 322 vehicle accidents, 329 animal complaints, 38 assaults, 20 burglaries, 89 disorderly conduct calls, 23 drugs or narcotics complaints are called, 55 theft calls, 35 vandalism calls and 1,120 warrants were issued by the courts. If you look at the rest type here, it was 220 drugs or narcotics arrests made in 2020 by the deputies. There's eight intentional damage arrests, 111 DUIs that were made, 30 underage consumptions, those numbers, if you look back into the years, have actually been a little bit higher in the last couple of years. 43 assaults and then 125 other traffic citations for a grand total of 537. And then if you jump to the next page here.
I don't, I don't have these in digits.
You don't?
I don't have, I don't have these to.
You don't have any digital, okay. If you look at the next page there, you'll see in 2020, the sheriff's office handled $225,906.22. That's with the bonds and with everything coming and going to our office. But sheriff's fees received were $92,181.91. That's off civil process fees and those are just some of the fees that the sheriff's office collects. Collected $12,592.1 or towards executions, towards the public and to hand back to the public, I should say. And $4,175 in warrant fees that were collected in 2020. If you jump on down to the next column here, civil papers served, you can see those are down 300 from 2019. There was 2,004, or 2411, 2,411 civil papers that were served. Executions, you can see, were up considerably. There was 192 executions that were served in 2020 compared to 113 in 2019. And even if you look back in 2018, there were 73, so those numbers in the last couple of years have more than doubled on our executions. Warrant served, 780. Calls for service, you can see those are up about 400, 500 more than year past, 7,569. Transport miles, 42,392 miles. Transport miles are just the miles that we're transporting to and across the state, picking up inmates or dealing with somebody with some mental health issues. As you can see, those numbers are down considerably due to COVID. There was a lot of constraints and we, we cut back a little bit on some of our warrants, maybe our, we did a geographical area, just nearby counties for some of our warrants for the time being here. February 15th, we are going to lift that now that we've all had our option to get the vaccine. Today is actually our second shot for that, people that opted to take that. So that'll give us a couple of weeks for everybody to build up their immunity. And so February 15th, we're going to start going back to picking up our warrants that are out and about across the countryside. So this year, I'm guessing our miles will probably be a little bit higher as well. If you jump on down one more, you can see mortgage foreclosures, we had four mortgage foreclosure sales compared to 2018 and 11, 18, there was 17 and even 17, there was 30. So that number has declined a lot there. I think some of that also has to do to COVID. There's a federal thing in there where you can evict people, there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes along with that, but I know that was extended until March, I think this year Biden extended that, so.
Brad, will you back up to executions, just for clarification, what warrants execution and how come they, you have, you have any idea what?
Sure. Execution.
192 executions.
192 executions, so it's not exactly what you think it is. It's a, an execution is when someone gets levy against somebody, somebody gets a, Lee sues me, he gets a judgment against me, I'm not paying Lee. So what Lee does is he goes to clerk of court, he gets the judgment, he brings it to the sheriff's office and then statutorily, it's the sheriff's responsibility to go after Brad here because I didn't pay Lee on this lawsuit. So what I do is we do some homework, we find out what property Brad has. Does he have any vehicles that are free and clear, is there any property that I could levy upon and have a sheriff sale to fulfill that debt? So that's what, essentially what an execution is. Why there was more this year, I don't know if it's because of COVID, that's an easy response for everybody to throw out, it seems like lately. I do think that is maybe a part of it and it was, there was a couple of months there where there was a lot of people that weren't working. So maybe that kind of caught up to things. I don't have an answer of why, an absolute answer other than COVID.
They're very time consuming though.
They are very time consuming, there's a lot of work that goes into executions. There's a lot of homework that goes into them.
Who does that work in your office?
Our civil process deputy, Adam, he does all the executions, so. When he gets those, we have a certain amount of time statutorily that we have to work these. So he's got a short window on when each one of these comes in to do all his homework, to find the vehicle, to find the property and then of course, we have to go out there and actually levy upon it and take that property, seize it.
I could see that, that would be a ton of work, I mean, to research all that and figure all that out. That's, it's kind of a puzzle, each one of these 192 things, it's kind of a puzzle, but, yeah.
Well, actually the civil process side of the sheriff's office is very complex and there's a lot of laws and a lot of things that go along with that, so. Well, actually, the civil process side of the sheriff's office is very complex, and there's a lot of laws and a lot of things that go along with that, so. That's busy, yeah, there's a, there's a lot. We actually got a few cars in storage right now from executions, so.
Oh, all right.
No more questions on the sheriff stats, we'll jump to the detention center stats here. A little bit, little bit longer, so. Um, if you look at the average daily population in the first set of paragraphs there. Um, we're actually down twenty point seven six for our average daily population from two thousand nineteen. So twenty twenty, our average daily population was forty-four point six one. If you look at two thousand nineteen, we're at sixty-five point three seven. Actually, if you look at two thousand seventeen, we're at seventy-eight point nine eight, sixty-seven point eight eight and eighteen. You can see the number slowly declining from there. I do believe a lot of twenty twenty was due to COVID. That's why our numbers are even less than nineteen. I was kind of projecting around that mid-sixties. Beginning of the year is kind of what I was estimating at, and then, like I say, we come in well, twenty lower.
Brad, also to go along with that, haven't the judges changed some of how they sentence individuals that they aren't ending up? In jail, they they have different parameters that they use.
Yeah, um, like I say, there is, with the judicial reform, there have been some changes on sentencing and what people get and. Working with COVID a little bit, so there is, there's gonna be a lot of data and there's gonna be a lot of stuff that hopefully we can learn from COVID. Going forward, looking at these numbers and looking at recidivism rates and looking at all this going forward. Um, all that takes time and that, there's a lot that goes along with.
That maybe is a project for you, me and Matt to, and talking to the judges about, you know, what are we learning about? You know, what, what are the criteria that judges now apply with COVID, and maybe there's something we can learn with that as we.
Uh, bringing it back. To the courthouse. You know, we spent a million dollars on a third or second courtroom. Did that have an effect so we can tell people that that could have an effect on, or did it expedite trials so we could? Or or didn't it make that much difference?
With COVID, there's, no. With these numbers, it's hard to tell because COVID hit in March, and then the courts were kind of at a standstill. And then trials actually didn't start until the last couple of weeks. So that's where there's some, that data will be skewed a little bit on that, so I don't have an answer on the third courtroom. I I do know personally, it's helped a little bit with shuffling people and working with inmates.
I heard yesterday you got somebody locked up over there, been there for over two years.
We've got a couple that have actually been in for over two years, two, two and a half years.
System pretty good.
They've, they've.
But that's not a, that's not an issue with the court space, that's a issue of the process.
That's an issue with the process.
Yeah.
Process allows them to keep appealing or whatever they're, whatever that those guys are doing, so.
We were on track to see how good the third jury courtroom was gonna help us out, and then COVID hit and it kind of stalled everything.
I have to believe, though, eventually we're gonna have to catch up, and I'm sure it's gonna be a benefit to have those two courtrooms, just to be able to allow. I mean, some of these individuals need to get through the system, or else some of their charges can be dismissed, so.
Well, it's, and there's a bigger picture too. I mean, I think, I I think it's. The the tricky part, as you look at the data, you know, with the way the jail tracks data and the way the court system tracks data, and Matt and I have gone, you know, we've been working on this for a couple of years now. It's tricky to find the ways in which you can, you can kind of tease that out. On the other hand, it just kind of, just. You know, just reasoning it through, it just seems like it's gonna help a little bit. The other thing is, just in general, for the process of justice, whether a person has to be in jail or not, you know, or whether it's a civil or criminal lawsuit. You know, having that extra space is gonna allow the court schedule just to move along faster, and, you know, the justice will be a little bit speedier.
Yep, absolutely. Like I said, it is. It is a little speedier, I know, for for that, like I say, if they have to, a big court trial, they can just set it, make it happen. Because there's another courtroom, they don't have to work with the other courts to make sure, and then jostle jurors and people back and forth, so. It it does, and it has been nice on that aspect, so. Jumping ahead here, you'll look down to the total number of bookings for two thousand twenty. You'll see twenty twenty was two thousand two hundred and forty-seven bookings, and if you look at the last three years, they're all around that twenty-nine hundred. Uh, so we're about six hundred less than we were in two thousand nineteen. The reason for that is COVID. The rest, actually, I don't think have gone down. But due to COVID, there's a lot of class one misdemeanors that were not being brought into the detention center, who's, we worked with the courts a little bit. So some of them smaller offenses, like driving under revocation is a class one misdemeanor where they would typically get brought in. Get fingerprinted and kicked loose. A lot of those were actually. Just due to COVID to try to eliminate officers and deputies. Dealing with that person in their vehicle and then bringing up to jail and possibly contaminating the jail. A lot of those were just cut out for the time being, so.
So they're just, sorry, I'm looking again, um, so is, are they given a citation or are they just?
Given a citation with the court date.
Okay.
We gotta come in, well, to figure out how we're gonna get all these fingerprints and all that stuff later on here in the near future, so it might be, might be busy, but.
Might be something, you know, it might be a legislative, it it, you know, thing that might point to some legislative solutions, if we can, you know, do more citations. You know, instead of, instead of bookings, you know, that might be a.
Basically, the officer is getting all the information in the car with their computers. Yep. Next one here, as a new thing that I started keeping track of. Um, in two thousand eighteen here, I think it's kind of an important thing to kind of share. That's the total number of protective custody mental holds that have had no charges, and they're only being held in our custody. Because of a mental health hold, until they can get treatment in Haverah or HSC. You can see in twenty twenty, there was sixty-five individuals. Also, in two thousand nineteen, there were sixty-five individuals. And two thousand eighteen, there was forty-seven individuals, like I say, were held. The reason we were holding these is maybe the safe room was full, maybe they're combative, um, some issues there, so we work closely with. Kerry Johnston here in town, with the Human Service Agency, that. Try our best to make sure that these people are not spending afternoon or evening or even coming to our facility. Um, oftentimes, people, they haven't done anything wrong, but. Uh, because of the mental health condition, they're combative, or like I say, the safe room is full, so. We're the alternative, unfortunately.
Yeah, we still see a large number of that. It's unfortunate that that's our only solution.
Before the safe room was available, those numbers were a lot higher.
Those numbers were.
Everybody that's threatened to harm themselves were taken and put, put into custody until they could be evaluated, and so. Safe room has really made a big difference.
Safe room and also, like I say, crisis intervention training.
Yeah, that too, CIT, yeah.
Big difference on bringing people in, so. Uh, if you jump down to the middle here, uh, total prisoner days for twenty twenty was sixteen thousand four hundred and forty-two. Um, like I say, uh, just to compare to two thousand nineteen, it was twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight. Again, that was a lot less days in our facility. If you jump on down to twenty-four-seven fees collected, in twenty twenty, there was forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Collected, two thousand nineteen, there was seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. Of course, down due to COVID. Actually, just got a report yesterday in Pennington and Cottington County are the only two counties in the state that are actually fully operational twenty-four-seven. Doing UAs, PBTs and doing the whole program.
Can I, is that in large part thanks to that kiosk that we purchased? Does that help?
Yes, uh, thanks to the kiosk, kind of get that up and going. A lot of the other counties are still working on different things and. Maybe smaller or different sizes, a kiosk may not work for them, so.
Does Pennington have a kiosk also, do you know?
I know Minnehaha and Cottington were the first ones in the state to to get those. I don't know if Pennington has those or not. I'm guessing they may have by now.
Since they're kind of.
If you look, I put the graph back up, just so people know what we're talking about, that light green number on the graph, you can see it jumps up in October. And that's about, that's when we got, I think that's when we got the kiosk, isn't it?
I think it was November when we got it up.
Yeah.
Mid-October and November when we got it up.
So that, that's, that's why that, that's important, yeah.
We jump on down, there's some interesting stats here. Fourteen thousand five hundred and fourteen PBTs were given in twenty twenty with only thirty-eight failures. So, um, you see the program definitely helps, definitely works. Three thousand four hundred and thirteen UAs were given, with seventy-eight failures and four hundred and nine people had missed the UAs. See, some of that was due to COVID, trying to get the program up and going again. Some of the monies collected here, uh, there were a grand total of five hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents that the county. The jail had collected. Um, that's twenty-four-seven fees, work release fees, out-of-county contract fees, fingerprint fees, you can see all those there. Jail made two hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. That was remitted back to the county to go into the general fund. Um, the sheriff's office made ninety-six thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents in sheriff's fees and warrant fees. That were given back to county for. For, uh, we remitted back to the general fund for a grand total of three hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and one dollars and fifty-two cents. You can see some of the proceeds down there. Phone cards made, there's forty-four thousand dollars made there. Profit was seven thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars, or five hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-one cents. And if you jump on down to the last page, it just kind of breaks down the whole nineteen eighty-five, the average daily population. How it crept up to two thousand and seventeen, and then it slowly been declining since then, so.
Yeah, a question, Brad.
Sure.
On the phone card thing, I know you recorded conversations. You don't, but somebody automatically, it was all a conversation where they're. And those are outgoing, they can't make incoming calls. How long do you keep stuff like that?
To be honest with you, I I don't know, uh, their third-party Securus is the one that actually monitors and takes those and keeps those. I shouldn't tell you how long back they go, I guess. No reason at all, uh, voice doesn't take a whole lot of data, so I'm guessing it probably be well over six months. Typically, we only need it within a month or two.
About like a two, three years, four years, five years.
It it's possible that Securus has their servers that are big enough to go back that far, they haven't had the need to go back and look anything way back that.
Now, they, they, uh, do they pretty well take care of all the jails in the state, then?
Uh, they take care of Pennington, Winter Jail and. That's all. So just, just us three. There's many different options out there that people use and look at.
Are people using the visual quite a bit?
Yep, yep, that's slowly becoming the newer, newer thing. Just the video visitation, like I say, especially during COVID, you don't actually have to come to our facility. You can dial up and actually have that conversation, case to case, and of course, it's being monitored by Securus to make sure that. Nothing nefarious is happening back and forth, and they're having a video visit, so.
Can't cover everything twenty-four, so.
Can't cover everything, we can try. Yep. Thank you. So. Getting some there, tried to make it short, seems like it gets a little long, I apologize.
Thank you, Brad.
Always a lot of information.
Good information.
Since we have you here too, are you done with your report?
Just a couple of other things I wanted to share here, like I say, I mentioned COVID vaccinations, the staff have all been offered, and. About half the staff did take that. So that is, our second shot actually happens today. Just recently, the end of December, we've had four of our staff here, myself included. Um, that had the opportunity to take the NICO leadership class, that's a twelve-week class that's online, and there's a cohort we work with and. Myself, uh, two sergeants, Sergeant Solomon, Sergeant Eskemia, and Chief Corrections Officer Blackwalder. All had the opportunity to take this class, and it was a very rewarding class. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to take that.
Congratulations on graduating too. It's not, it's a rigorous thing, it's a.
It's a, it's, there's a lot of homework and it's a, it takes a lot of time during your, during your week, so. We also have two more, I thought it was such a great class, we got two more. Another sergeant in the jail, Sergeant Nils, and then, uh, one of my investigators is taking that class as we speak right now, so. Getting feedback from them, and they're also enjoying it, and they're learning a lot of good stuff, so.
NICO got us a really good deal, actually.
Yeah, yeah, we got a good deal through NICO to be able to take that class and. Forward with that, so. Just a couple things coming forward here in the jail, like I say, we're currently looking at getting quotes for updating our cameras, doing phase two of our cameras. And then also to do phase two of our lock system. Uh, most quotes should be coming in here, and those are budgeted items for this year as well, so that's something in the near future, we'll be able to be seen and sharing with you guys here, so.
See, we got the new pickup on the road, that looks good, the new truck.
Yeah. So, sharp looking rig, and that's actually the next thing on the topic.
Yeah, so we'll move down to, um, action to authorize a purchase of patrol cars as budgeted.
I sent out letters to our local. Dealers here to get bids for, um, two budgeted vehicles here, and I'm looking at doing two more pickups again. Last winter, horrible drives were needed. All them explorers, they're also horrible drive, but a little nice to have a little more clearance, and like I say, when we're doing execution, when we're having to take boats and trailers and whatnots. Pickups are kind of handy as well, so. Watertown Ford Chrysler did send back a quote or a bid here, I should say, of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. Twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. State bid was twenty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars. So that is three hundred and eighty dollars picked up more. I would still recommend buying from them because by the time. Uh, if we went with state bid, we're gonna have to go to a pier, wherever that hub is, so manpower, staffing, gas, driving back and forth in time is. Uh, will make up that three hundred and eighty dollars per vehicle, so I'd recommend going with that, looking at buying twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vandy and second by Gable. Any further discussion?
We appreciate you keeping.
What are we buying?
Twenty twenty-one ran pickup.
Two of them?
Two of them. I'll get you the.
Okay, thank you.
Does that have white bar and stuff installed or separate?
That is a separate one, I don't know, we have to buy those. Look at the old vehicles and look at the year that we bought those, try to get a couple. Cycles out of the equipment in the vehicles there, so if that's something that we have to recycle. The outgoing vehicles, it's something that we just recently bought. But radios were currently updating still. But if there's other things on there that we can reuse, I'd do my best to reuse.
There's a, there's a line item in the budget for vehicle equipment, is there not? Yeah, so it's separate from.
Just, just curious.
Right, I appreciate the fact that we can keep trying to buy local whenever we can, so.
Like I say, and I always ask them if they'd be willing to trade, and of course, they would be willing to trade in old vehicles, we don't have a whole slew of old vehicles. So they usually treat us pretty well when we do a trade-in as well. When those numbers come in and when we get vehicles, we'll operate those in order as well, sure.
Do we, Madam Chair, do we want to talk about agenda?
We gotta vote on this yet. So, all in favor, say aye. Oh, that motion carries.
Number, number, item number seven to detention.
Right, is that Steve or?
I can sit up here, he wants, I know he's doing a lot of the homework on it.
Yeah.
Working on the RFP, or the bid, I should call it.
All right, so we will go back then to item number seven, action to prove a notice to bidders for a detention center sanitary sewer repair project.
Guessing Steve was giving you a little background on this, um, last year, a couple of years ago, we had an issue with. Cast iron pipe in our, one of our walls downstairs in the basement that deteriorated completely. We had to tear the wall open and replace that with some PDC. After that, a company come in and scope all our lines just to make sure that we're operable. And it come back that there's a lot of lines that are deteriorating, and they would like to, um, come in and. I was like scrape them, yep, they would, they would scrape them so they're clear, and then they would build a pipeline to save them, so we don't have to dig up floors and. Knock out cement walls and whatnot, so. That's where we're at now.
And, and I, graph dad's in the packet, so if you guys want to look at it, it's on the screen.
Yeah, I went with my staff around, and there's some places that's already starting to leak in already in this process. I know there's been a few pieces that's been replaced here, there, and the floor, and all in the ceiling. But the biggest issue is, is all walls and all anything that's underneath the concrete, and so we had. This would be probably a lot cheaper than trying to dig everything out and and replace with all new pipe and stuff, so.
Plus being able to keep the, the building operational journey.
And I know there's been several facilities in the state that is being conducted this way, and stuff also.
What this is, so you got one quote and it was well over the threshold.
Right.
So we have to, we have to do an ad for bid. And, uh, so the idea is you blow a fiberglass sock basically into the existing pipe, and it just hardens in place, so it. You know, it takes away the need to dig up, like you were saying, so, um, kind of, kind of a high-tech approach, but, um. It's like, and you, you said you had it done at one of your. Yeah, so.
I've had it done at one, but it's still a better. I think it's ten, twelve years ago and. We've had no problem whatsoever with that other project coming up. But I don't wish to dig it. And so I'm gonna use that same process on that.
Alright, so we need a motion then.
I'll move, so move to, that we uh.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman, any further discussion?
Who is the dollars on that there?
We're just.
We know it's gonna be over. It's pretty likely over.
Oh, yeah. Right, yep. Exactly.
Fifty thousand I think is the threshold for bids, so I'm guessing it will be over that, so.
So the text, I mean, we were, we worked on this draft a little bit together, it looks okay to you.
Yep, yes.
And I think. And Cindy inserted a thing about um insurance, so that's, yeah, yep.
Still want cheaper to dig it up every single day.
So we, you don't even know they're there. They got it fixed and you don't even know what was fixed.
Yep.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
I think that's all we have for you. Uh, we'll move on to item number nine, action to approve advertising and hiring of a treasurer's office clerk to fill a vacancy and our treasurer. Is here, so I'll have Carol come forward. And hi, good morning, Carol.
Morning. Uh, I need permission from the board to fill a position in my office. And uh, just a clerk position.
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Vandy, the second by Johnson, is this a full-time or part-time position?
This is an action to approve advertising and hiring clerk fill a vacancy.
Alright.
Who, who left?
Uh, I don't know if we can discuss that.
Okay.
Personnel, yeah, it's personnel. We'll be calling executive session, so. Um, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Thanks, Carol.
Item number ten, action to approve claims for payment.
Uh, we have salary claims and then we have our monthly credit card claims that we pay at the end of the month. The credit cards are for Visa Relia Bank, the first one is four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents and that is for. Uh, miscellaneous supplies for the um. Uh, emergency management office, travel, gas, those type of things. Second one is also Visa Relia Bank in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents, also for miscellaneous supplies. Throughout the month for the sheriff's office.
Motion, second.
Okay, who made that motion? Okay, Vandy and then second by. Gable?
Yep.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. Item number.
And then we have January, sorry, we have January salary claims too that we managed to do and um. As a government entity, we are required for the first um salary claims of the year to publish the name of each. Employee and their gross salary amount, so you can see that is included in. This report, total salary claims are for the month of January are six hundred and four thousand. Eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and five cents, which includes matching. Insurance premiums and everything that the involved in the payroll.
Would approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to item number eleven, action, um possible discussion on COVID nineteen practices procedures policy and Natalie. We do have an item for that if she would want to come forward and. Bring this to our attention.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Um, this is under COVID nineteen, it's kind of COVID, it's not kind of COVID, but um due to COVID. So your annual gym reimbursements um that you pay out, this got brought to my attention that. We need to do some adjustments probably this year because of gyms being closed. Um, so Debbie and um Cindy's office, county payable clerk has done a great job of. Calling the gyms that um we use uh in the area that the employees are using barefoot. Planet Fitness Prairie Lakes Wellness Center in the gym and finding out the time periods that they were closed. And so it looks like it's part of March, all of April, and then part of May. So she went through and did an adjustment that she's recommending and I agree, this sounds good to me. Um, based on the normal days that you pay out for full uh membership is like a hundred and fifty-six days and so she did an adjustment to take that time off. And so she's adjusted it down and that it would be like a hundred and thirty days would be full instead of the normal hundred and fifty-six. And then there's like a similar two-thirds and one-third, you can look at the spreadsheet if you want, um she figured it out, so. Um, I think that would be my recommendation to go with what she has proposed, do you want to?
Make a motion to.
It's based on availability of the facility, so.
Right, I'd make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Gable, second by Johnson, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
For this year only.
For this year only.
The year twenty twenty.
Yes.
Alright, very good, thanks Natalie.
Here, we're all gonna be in the jail.
That's right.
Twenty twenty-one.
We're all gonna be in the.
Should have started last May.
Yeah. Alright.
Alright, item number twelve, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Nothing for twelve.
Alright, item number thirteen, action to approve personnel changes, we do have one, but I believe we're going to call an executive session first before we handle this, so. We'll just go through the rest of um the agenda and then we'll circle back to this after, so there will be some. Um, action taken after, after executive session, I'm guessing. Uh, item number fourteen, action to approve travel requests. Uh, public notices, possible former commissioners. Anyone have anything?
Not a, I don't think so.
Old business, anyone have any old business? How about new business? Anything for the open? I have a couple of things I would just mention, I had my ICAP meeting and um just for the public's information, they will be doing their VITA. Assistances again.
I was talking to Brad, I'm sorry, go ahead, I was just giving him hand signs.
Okay, um, so that is where they assist individuals with their tax returns. I apologize, they don't have the threshold of um the income for them to qualify, but they could call. The ICAP office and get that information.
LA TC Financial Services Department's also doing that as well.
And I think they're kind of those, they're utilizing those folks.
Okay.
Yeah. So that will be available again and as we all know that um. They did extend and this is going to be, it's called the new rental assistance, there was two hundred million dollars for rental assistance. For individuals that meet the qualifications. Uh, ICAP is actually hiring three full-time. Community service workers to handle this because the individuals, when it was there before. It just took so much time, so they're actually going to hire three new individuals just to handle this part of it. Um, there will not be mortgage assistance with this, like there was the previous one, this will strictly be rental utilities, those sorts of. Services, I guess is what I want to say, so anyway, and also um in the weatherization program. And that's kind of where they come in and do some rehab, they're looking for contractors in Watertown that would do that, so we'll have to try to. Get the word out, if there's any of them, contact ICAP, see what their um qualifications are there. What they look for to do that. Um, other than that, anyone else have anything for the open?
Uh, Cottington County Drug Court is having a graduation on Friday at ten AM, I think we've got four that are graduating from drug court. So congratulations to those folks, that is viewable online, that's friends and family, I think, can attend or fam- family members. But it will be held virtually online, I think at SD.net.
Yep. And that's, that was really nice, I listened in on the last one, the graduation, that worked out well when they did it virtually, so.
Yeah, that's uh coming up on Friday, the twenty ninth, at ten AM.
Alright, any other things for the open? Not, I think then we will go into executive session, it'll be under personnel.
Um, madam chair, so since there's. So since there's, we're gonna take action afterwards, I, I can, we'll do like we did last time, I'll just turn off the camera and the mic and it will stay online, so try to keep it brief and then we can come back online, so.
Should be able to make it pretty brief, so I look for a motion in a second.
Motion. I'll move to order.
I don't, I don't even know who, they're taking the last two that I heard. Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye. We are in executive session. Sure. Alright, mic's on. Okay, so we will go back up then to item number thirteen, action to approve personnel changes, and we had one in our packet. And Cindy, you want to mention that?
This is personnel change for the position of the welfare director. Uh, the person who has been hired is Sarah Faust. The effective date, start date is February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, the hourly rate of pay is twenty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. Do we have any other business? I think we've covered everything, so. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. We are adjourned, thank you.